Thank you all so much for being here tonight. I'd like to call to order the February 6th Seminole County School Board meeting. Tonight, for our invocation and pledge, Ms. Minnie Cardona is going to introduce our student invoker. She is the Director of World Languages and ESOL.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin and board members. Tonight, I would like to introduce our wonderful 3rd grader from Redbug Elementary, Katie Murphy. Katie Murphy has been in the dual-language program since kindergarten. This is her 3rd year. She's accompanied by her dad, Mr. Murphy, and her grandma here, Diana Danks. And also, we have her principal, Chris Watson, with us tonight, and her teacher, Saria Cardona, too. We're not related, I love her last name. And also, Nada Munston, who has been in the classroom supporting the dual-language program. So Katie, want to come up?
Hi, I'm Katie Murphy. I'm in 3rd grade at Redbug Elementary in the dual-language program. The dual-language program is special to me because you can learn someone else's culture. And if you meet someone, you will be able to make a friend, or you'll know them. And if they want to try to talk to you, you'll know what they're saying, and you could use it in everyday life. Say, you're at a park, and someone just fell down, and you want to help them, but they're not English, and they're Spanish. You can help them, and you'll be able to talk to them, and you can get to know them, and you'll just have a lot of friends. When you grow up, you'll just have so much friends, and it will be nice to know, and if you ever go somewhere, you can talk to other people. And they want to ask you something, then you can respond, and yeah. Thank you. So I'm going to be reciting the pledge in Spanish and English. So first, I'm going to start with Spanish. Please stand. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was tremendous. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. You really make us proud. Board members, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Bravo, congratulations. I know adults that can't speak two languages like that, and would be very nervous standing in front of a crowd of people like this. You very much made us proud, congratulations.
Yes, I have the same thing. You're amazing, and kudos to you. Continue speaking both languages, and teaching others, and being such a great friend that you are to everybody.
In addition to what the other school board members said, you're a charming little girl, and you're going to be very successful in life. You have a great personality and outlook.
Awesome. I think we should just let her run the rest of the meeting.
I think that's a great idea.
That'd go a lot better.
She's like, ready, she's ready to go.
Next you take roll call.
Oh, dear Lord. Oh, gosh. So, we're going to do roll call. I want the record to reflect that all school board members present are Mrs. Almond, Mrs. Sanchez, Dr. Calderon, and myself. We have the phone line open for Mr. Bauer, if he was able to call in. Do we know if he is on the line? All right? So at this time, we'll let the record reflect that it is the four board members in the boardroom. Tonight, we have joining us from the Seminole County Council of PTAs, Polly DeLucia. We always appreciate PTA support of our school district, and all that you all do. Dr. Griffin, do you have any agenda modifications?
Just one, Madam Chair. The addendum for good cause is marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag named addendum item.
All right. School board members, do we have any modifications? Mrs. Sanchez?
No, Madam Chair.
Dr. Calderon?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Almond?
No modifications, thank you.
Okay. We do have someone who is here to speak to item D, which is on page 26. If I can have an approval of the agenda outline, we'll remove that to allow the comment.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right.
Yes, we do. Please join me up front.
To follow that young lady is a little bit tough, so I'll do my best. Madam Chair, School Board Member, Superintendent, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Ms. Kaylee Hammond of the Seminole County Sheriff's Office, Public Affairs Office. This year, the annual Drug-Free Red Ribbon Calendar Contest transitioned from the State Attorney's Office to the Sheriff's Office. Due to the evolving technology, we moved away from creating a calendar and hosted an art contest for all 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th graders throughout Seminole County schools. We also wanted to do something different with the contest, involve the school resource deputies. Students were invited to design posters illustrating the importance of healthy, drug-free living. The selected winner's artwork is displayed on the back of our school resource deputy's patrol cars, with the grand prize winner's artwork being displayed on a digital billboard in the corners, 1992 and 434, through the end of February. All schools were invited to participate and submit up to three posters per grade level. We had an overwhelming response from students participating from 39 schools, with a total of 151 posters. This project was literally dumped in Kaylee's lap in the 9th inning. She demonstrated amazing leadership, poise, passion, and creativity on this project. Her team has absolutely set the bar high for their next year's events. Please join me in review, watching a quick video.
Basically, we take the artwork, we scan it into the computer, and then we have large-format digital printers that actually print onto adhesive vinyl, and we apply it to the windows with a squeegee and maybe some heat. That's how the adhesive sets, and it's good on there for a couple of years. With the kids actually doing artwork, you know, that to us is a great thing, because we're artists here, you know? So to encourage the kids to have that artistic flair, and then to have them advertised on the back of the police cruisers, I mean, that's just great exposure for the kids, and for what you're doing in the community, and we're just glad to be a part of it.
Well, I'm really excited that one of my art drawings is like on the back of a car. It's just like, what? I never thought that, like, that little drawing would get so far.
And the 2017 overall grand prize winner. Come on down, Kira.
I didn't think it was good at the time, and it just means a lot, because I personally put a lot of time and effort into my artworks. It's pretty cool to see that it's actually on the back of a top car.
Kids should not use drugs, and they should learn, if they do, then they should learn their lesson.
Don't let peer pressure get to you in doing drugs, and, because that's like the main big deal with, like, kids and, like, teenagers, is that peer pressure gets to them.
The message that has been displayed in there is a direct reflection of the values and the customs and the norms that you reflect in your home.
We hope that they actually internalize what the message is, and that is to stay away from drugs.
As a small token of appreciation, we'd like to represent, excuse me, present Ms. Kaylee with a small paperweight. Her husband, Cody, and coworkers are here tonight in support of Kaylee. Please join me, congratulate Kaylee on her team's accomplishments.
Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to introduce Mrs. Julie Seoka. Ms. Seoka is joining us as the Coordinator of Student Assignment and Program Access.
at Wilson Elementary School, Mr. Ryan Gard-Herald.
Ms. Seoka has worked as an educator for 17 years. She began her career teaching in both elementary and middle school classrooms.
Mr. Gard-Herald has worked in the field of education in Indiana and Florida.
For the past nine and a half years, she's had the honor of working at South Seminole
After years as a classroom teacher, he worked as the Assistant Principal at Crystal Lake
Middle School as a teacher, dean, and an assistant principal.
Elementary School, and most recently, he had the privilege of working at Forest City
Ms. Seoka brings with her a wealth of valuable magnet school administrative experience.
Elementary School.
She brings this to our team, and we're very fortunate to have her join us.
He is both honored and excited to be the new principal of Wilson Elementary School,
Should I start over?
and he takes the helm tomorrow. Family members in attendance tonight are his husband, Sean Gard-Herald, his son David,
Congratulations, Mrs. Seoka. I apologize, I got distracted.
and also friend Chrissy Lester, former AP at Wilson, and now at Midway Elementary School, and Carlos and Erica Cuevas, and family who are here to support him.
I forgot to introduce her family.
Congratulations, Mr. Ryan Gard-Herald.
Mrs. Seoka is joined by her husband, Antonio Seoka, and their son, Antonio. So thank you for joining her.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Griffin. I'd like to introduce our new Coordinator of Environmental Standards and Project Management with Facility Services, Jerry Henkens. Jerry is a graduate of Florida Institute of Technology with a BS degree in marine biology. He is an Illinois native and a registered sanitarian with the Florida Environmental Health Association. He has extensive environmental and public health knowledge. He recently was employed by Florida Department of Health in Seminole County. Welcome, Jerry, thank you.
This is where we always lose everyone. We kiss babies and then they leave. For a comment on item 4D, Mrs. Barb Brown is here to speak, and so, Mrs. Brown, I'll ask, if you'd like to, come on up to the podium, and then you can introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Barb Brown. I'll pull the mic down because I'm short. Okay. My name is Barb Brown, I'm with FBMC Benefits Management Company. And Madam Chair, Superintendent Griffin, board members, I'm speaking kind of in advance of what your agenda has laid out. I thought I would speak at the end, but depending upon where your agenda goes in this discussion, on behalf of FBMC, David Falconberry, our board, and your local FBMC team members, I'd just like to thank you. We understand that you may be going in a different direction. We appreciate that and respect that. We remain flexible and adaptable, and would love to continue to serve you, but we want you to know that what is most important to us is just, we're so appreciative of the opportunity, that we've been able to support you and serve you for the last couple of years, and we hope our paths cross again in the future, should you decide to go on this endeavor. And we are here to continue to support you, as long as you need us to support you. So just wanted to give you best wishes and appreciation.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Student discipline?
Yes, Madam Chair. My recommendation is that the School Board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from January 22nd, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Don't have any public comment cards that have been turned into the clerk? If there's anyone here that would like to give public comment, certainly the cards are on the back table. You're welcome to fill them out and turn them into the clerk. If we have any, I don't believe we have any unfinished business, but we do have new business.
We do have some new business, yes. Board members, just came out of a work session, it feels like a short time ago, I guess it was two, three hours ago now, and as requested, I put together a letter for your review. My recommendation is that the School Board of Seminole County authorize the superintendent to forward a letter with substantially the same language as included in the draft presented. So at this time, I'd like everyone, do you have your draft letter? Let's take a moment to review it, and any comments?
Back, board members?
No additional comments.
No additional comments, thank you.
I think the letter reflects what we discussed.
One thing I might add, in the first paragraph, it said, "You did not participate in the work session on Tuesday, February 6th." And at the conclusion of this meeting, I'll add, or the board meeting, on Tuesday, February 6th. Just that one extra little piece. Okay?
Great. Is there a motion to authorize the letter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for putting that together so quickly in between our meetings. All right, superintendent's report.
The main item is the E-Pathways recognitions, and just so you're aware, we are celebrating National School Countering Week. Ms. Sanchez reminded me to get it out there on social media. We did. Actually got some feedback right away, and that we're celebrating CTE Month also. And probably in an upcoming meeting, I'm going to have Dr. Weisong, since he has final numbers, share what's really happening with industry certifications and the opportunities for our students and for our schools' phenomenal work.
Any comments, questions about that? Great. Board members, committee updates, comments, and Mrs. Sanchez, you're up.
All right, first, I'll go ahead and do my committee reports. Business Advisory Board, we met, I guess it was this week, my weeks are, maybe it was last week, I don't know. Fabulous meeting. I would like to thank Captain Francis and Mr. G from Greenwood Lakes Middle School. He brought Shiloh with him, and I was, and had an opportunity to do a trick with him, and-
And Shiloh's a dog.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, yes. So our SRO, School Resource Officer, and Shiloh, we did some tricks, and we were sharing, he was sharing with the Business Advisory Board how animals are really helpful to students, and, you know, when somebody's having a bad day and they interact with the kids, it's really helpful, and I can definitely vouch for that, because I had like eight animals in my classroom. So, it was the rabbits hopping all over the place, but it, we really appreciated having Shiloh there and Shiloh at the school. Wonderful meeting with the Business Advisory Board, and everybody sharing a lot of different And then, of course, we all went to so many different things, so I'm just going to go ahead and touch on the drug-free, wrap this, and thank you to Wrap This, and along with all the other groups that helped make this happen, and it's amazing, because being in a classroom and watching it, I just want everybody to know that the artwork that they did was done in school. They're not allowed to take it home. So for anybody that thinks, wow, maybe they had some assistance at home, that's not the case. They have to do it at school and get it done there, and that's what's so neat. So 37 vehicles had the wraps on them, and I just, I'm hoping it goes viral, and that everybody gets to see this. And then, of course, all of us had a great time going to meet all the new teachers of the year, the finalists at elementary, middle, and high school, and Science Sphere, and all those different things that we've all had an opportunity to go and visit, different schools, had a chance to speak to the leadership students at Lake Howell, and I'm going to let everybody else speak, so I don't take up anybody else's time. Thanks.
Thank you so much. I think it's Dr. Calderon? Yeah, Dr. Calderon. They give me a list, but, you know.
B punt. Just wanted to thank all of our teachers who celebrated National Literacy Week. I know many of us were in classrooms this past week, reading to the students, and it's a fun way to engage the community, to come into our classrooms. Also, want to invite anybody who's interested to either sponsor or attend. Our Crews Tech Fest is coming up next month. That's very important for our crewmies. Congratulations to all of our all-county band members who presented last Saturday, and our Employee of the Year ceremony was phenomenal, and I wanted to thank both Center Florida Regional Hospital and CFE, Federal Credit Union, for their sponsorship. I think all of our employees of the year were very excited to be honored in that way. And Dr. Griffin, thank you for having staff host the SCPS Innovation Showcase over at Lyman last week. It was neat to see even schools that don't have a magnet program or a program of emphasis, they still have very unique educational opportunity offerings to all of our students, and it was neat to see the students engaged, but also the parents, and many of us were even saying, we kind of felt like we were gypped. We wanted to go back to elementary school and middle school, because we didn't have those opportunities when we went to school. And shout out to South Seminole Middle School for their Leadership Day. They hosted Franklin Covey Leadership Schools from around the country. I know, Ms. Almond, you were there as well, and to see how the students are so engaged in that program. We saw a little precursor, having a 3rd grader with dual-language, but when you get to the middle school, they really honor the cultures of many different countries. And the humble day of the year, for any of us, if you think you're brilliant, on February 8th at 4 o'clock, I'd invite anybody to come to the finals of our academic tournament in this room. All of our high schools have teams and compete district-wide, and then they go statewide, but I'm lucky to answer just a few of those questions, if I must be totally transparent about it. And finally, many of our schools are doing so well with the whole idea of health and wellness, and making sure that our team members are healthy. Greenwood Lakes this past Saturday hosted a 5K to raise funds for the school, but more importantly, it was neat to see how many students were there that brought their parents to get engaged in healthy activities, but how many employees from other schools, other than Greenwood, going there to support the great works at Greenwood Lakes Middle School. So I just had to say thank you for doing that. That concludes-
Okay, mine will be very brief. I wanted to thank Ms. Mills and her team of volunteers, some also from Michael Lorenz's department, for two different events. Employee of the Year, outstanding event, very efficient as well, we all appreciated that. And surprising the Teachers of the Year in their classrooms, though, it was so much fun, and we look forward to celebrating all the Teachers of the Year. RFP for band uniforms, very interesting process. We had samples of all the materials from the different vendors, and we had one band director who tried every single piece on and talked us through the quality aspects and the different traits of the fabrics and all. It was really a great process, and it was very short, and thank you to Lou Angel Loudish, did a great job leading the effort for the committee. Appreciate it going with Dr. Griffin to the Lake House Student Forum. It's very interesting, you know, we all have these impressions of high schoolers, and they're very protective of their younger siblings and peers. When Dr. Griffin asked them about what age for cellphones and all, they were, they were up there in middle school going into high school, none of the elementary stuff. They're very much aware of the threats out there on social media, and it was a really great group, so thank you, Dr. Griffin, for that. And the Vito Winter Springs Chamber had a sports-themed business meeting recently, and they talked about the huge economic impact to Seminole County in particular, for the hotels, for the fields being rented, and I think it's also impacted us that when we try to get a venue for an event, it's very difficult to do, because they want all the rooms that go with an event, and we don't often bring that to the table. I think that's all I have that hasn't been said, so thank you.
The Foundation Board meeting that Dr. Griffin and I both serve on, the Seminole County Foundation for Public Schools, we did a recap of our work session last time. I guess we'll have an opportunity to do another recap at our next Foundation Board meeting, talking about the items that we discussed during our work session this afternoon relating to the Foundation MOU. They talked about the preparations for Teacher of the Year. The foundation has really taken on the bulk, if not all, of the planning for Teacher of the Year this year, and so I'm excited to see all of the things that they have planned. Dr. Griffin and I also had a great opportunity to showcase the mastery-based or personalized learning that we are doing here in Seminole County. You know, we were one of just a few school districts in the state that were given the opportunity to be the pilot, I guess, for that initiative that sort of came out of the Foundation for Excellence Education Foundation, but it's kind of taken hold in a lot of the legislative discussion, and quite honestly, I think we were already doing a lot of that before it became the cool thing to talk about. But we had an opportunity, very appreciative, Representative Jennifer Sullivan and Senator Dorothy Hugel sent some staff to come and tour, along with many of our staff, Sean Gard-Herald and his team, Dr. Cody, so many team members came along to give them that up-close, personal look of what that personalized learning experience- that. And the Vito Winter Springs Chamber had a sports-themed business meeting recently. They talked about the huge economic impact to Seminole County in particular for the hotels, for the fields being rented, and I think it's also impacted us that when we try to get a venue for an event, it's very difficult to do because they want all the rooms that go with an event, and we don't often bring that to the table. I think that's all I have that hasn't been said. So thank you.
The Foundation Board Meeting that Dr. Griffin and I both serve on the Seminole County Foundation for Public Schools, we did a recap of our work session last time. I guess we'll have an opportunity to do another recap at our next Foundation Board Meeting, talking about the items that we discussed during our work session this afternoon relating to the Foundation MOU. They talked about the preparations for Teacher of the Year. The foundation has really taken on the bulk, if not all, of the planning for Teacher of the Year this year, and so I'm excited to see all of the things that they have planned. Dr. Griffin and I also had a great opportunity to showcase the mastery-based or personalized learning that we are doing here in Seminole County. You know, we were one of just a few school districts in the state that were given the opportunity to be the pilot, I guess, for that initiative that sort of came out of the Foundation for Excellence Education Foundation, but it's kind of taken hold in a lot of the legislative discussion, and quite honestly, I think we were already doing a lot of that before it became the cool thing to talk about. But we had an opportunity, very appreciative, Representative Jennifer Sullivan and Senator Dorothy Huchel sent some staff to come and tour along with many of our staff. Sean Gard-Herald and his team, Dr. Cody, so many team members came along to give them that, that up-close, personal look of what that personalized learning experience can really look like. And the feedback that we received was that it was very well received, and they appreciated the time. So I appreciate them taking the time to come and visit. We don't get legislators to come and visit in our classroom, in our schools, very often, so it was nice to have Representative Sullivan here. And she wasn't feeling well that day either, so that was even more meaningful that she still came, although she wasn't feeling well. Oh, and other interesting thing about that, apparently Representative Sullivan's father graduated from Lyman, and the staff member from Dorothy Huchel's office, Lindsay Swindle, graduated from Seminole High School. So it's kind of funny to see how Seminole has kind of spread around. We appreciate their support and being here.
And you took them to Lyman, right, PSI?
Yes.
So even that much more cool.
Lyman and Seminole. Yep. On October, October, oh yeah, on January 29th, I attended the Regional Task Force on Puerto Rican Arrivals, and again, special thanks to Minnie Cardona for going on the field trip with me down to Kissimmee for that. So many folks from the region that are bringing their concerns and solutions for how they're handling that crisis, and I think, I think we're doing an excellent job with Minnie and all of her team and the folks at our schools in making sure that once those students enroll in our schools, they are our students and we're caring for them. So that'll be an ongoing item. Participated in another Teacher of the Year luncheon, the final one. We all love the opportunity to hear directly from our teachers. It was just wonderful. Had a lot of good takeaways, and sorry to see those end. Very cool.
A whole new crop.
The Sanford Chamber Gala was great.
Oh, that's right.
Right. It was a wonderful event.
Yes, it was awesome.
Very well attended, and all proceeds went to Meals on Wheels, which was, of course, a great nonprofit organization in our community that serves all sorts of folks in need. I'm also going to participate in the Cost of Poverty Experience on February 7th. They did one down in Orange County. Are you going to go to it?
Yep.
I'm, it sounds weird to say I'm excited to participate in that, but I, it sounds like it's a wonderful several-hour experience of what it is like to that situation. And thank you to the Sheriff's Office, another great partner. They're working, and the Genie Morris Spelling Bee.
That's right.
This is February 9th.
That's right.
Great opportunity for our kids. I want to thank you all again for the long but meaningful discussion during our work session this afternoon. We do so much work not at this dais that I think sometimes it's easy for the public to assume that this is all that being a school board member consists of. And so this, this letter and this quick vote that was worked on just here recently is the result of a lot of hard work and discussion and some uncomfortable conversations, and I appreciate all of us and our staff being willing to do that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing I forgot to mention. I wanted to give a shout out to all of our guidance counselors. This week is National School Counseling Week. So for all our guidance counselors who dedicate so much time and tires hours to our students and families, we really appreciate you. And I know that they do so much, and a lot of times they don't get the kudos for it, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we do shout out for them. And if anybody wants to write a little card to them, I'm sure they would greatly appreciate that.
Yelts. All right. With that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.